Can I call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order? Present, we have Ms. Pitko, Ms. Lieber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Superintendent Dr. Tony Jones, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Max Canelli, Mr. Peterson. Going to ask you all to please rise for the pledge. Ms. Lieber, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I just want to start by thanking the Board for getting questions to Dr. Jones last week and over the weekend, and to staff for turning it around so quickly. Appreciate getting it last night so we had the day to look at it. And we will, hopefully, a lot of them, you got a lot of them, but we will try to be timely with questions for next week as well. And with that, we will get started. Give the floor to you to get us started for our Targeted Enhancements.
Sure, just a couple of things. We'll start out by focusing on page five to seven for targeted enhancements. But before we do that, I am going to ask the high school headmasters just to come forward. They wanted to just update on the GPA weighting discussion that we had at the last meeting. As you know, it was going to be on this meeting as a voting item. We took it off. But since it fit right into curriculum and it's all kind of part of this whole vision of the graduate aspect, we thought we'd let them update you While they're actually getting that together, one request that we would have, if you had a chance to go through all the questions and the answers, we did have 168 questions, so the volume is high. So it's difficult that quickly to be able to know which question is in which section. So if a question is asked and you know that that's in your section, if you would please chime in and say, "It's on page 34. I asked that question," just to be helpful to the staff.
David Ebling, Headmaster of Fairfield Ward High School.
Greg Hatze, Headmaster of Ludlow. We appreciate the time that you've allotted us. We'll be quick because we know you have a lot to talk about with the budget.
So thanks for having us back. We have done some work since we were here last week, and so some of the updates that we gave you is that we're going to take a look at those former Level Zero, former Zero Level classes that were in the non-core electives and reassign what we consider to be the appropriate honors level credit for some of those, as we talked about before, those end of year. So we are in the process of working with the departments and developing some of those honor criteria to determine which courses would fit that.
We've also been able to expand our circle of feedback. We had a PTA meeting at Ludlow last week, and at Ward, I think they have one this particular week.
Friday morning.
We had some chance to meet with some teachers and some students as well to get some of their feedback. And as many of you know, we just had a Q&amp;A session for the last hour here as well. Pretty good turnout. We had like 35, 40 people or so.
We also decided that we are going to move forward based on the feedback from the Board and something that wasn't in the Board policy, but changing those course names to be more transparent so that people, colleges, and parents, and students, and community members understand exactly what those look like.
And one of the pieces of feedback that we have heard that has resonated in multiple ways is the need to really take a look at the higher end, the students, or the courses that have an AP weighting that got bumped considerably higher. Some of the feedback, both from your questions as well as from parents, for us to take a look at how AP courses may be disproportionately bumped higher, and that that AP course bump could lead to more stress and anxiety for students who might be too stretched or oversubscribed if they're looking for that AP bump, and that the new max GPA of an A+ at the AP level at a 5.33 is too much higher than the current max of a 5.0, which changes the game for some students who are currently enrolled in our students. So hearing that feedback, that's something that we want to take very seriously, and, you know, that could lead to another revision that, you know, we discussed with you shortly.
And finally, we heard it again this evening, too. We will explore the feasibility of grandfathering our current freshmen and sophomores as well.
Finally, just we did some additional research because there was a lot of questions about what's the impact of the non-core electives on the GPA. As you remember, by eliminating Level Zero, we have to take all the Level Zero courses and either redistribute them as college prep or honors. We did some analysis of the student grades for 9th, 10th, and 11th. We reported to you the senior choices and how about 17% of the courses that seniors take were non-core electives. As it turns out, that percentage is exactly the same averaging the 9th, 10th, and 11th grade courses. The distribution's a little different. Freshmen tend to take more of those because they have less access to core electives. For instance, you know, English core electives are only offered in the senior year. But the average of those three grades was 17%. So that's, those are the number of courses that could potentially be impacted by lowering from Zero Level to college prep. But with David's first point about us taking a look at some of those, the potential of honors level for those non-core electives, that percentage would drop even lower for the courses that were impacted.
So thank you very much. We're not taking any questions tonight. I tried.
I don't want to start a long Q&amp;A on this. So if anybody has just some point of clarification for something that has not been covered last week, we'll take that, just to keep us on track for the budget. Mr. Peterson.
You mentioned this, but just to bring it out more clearly, there's two parts to what you're proposing to do. One is the weighting change, the other is the course renaming. There is nothing preventing you from doing the course renaming, correct, and leaving the GPA scale as it is.
That's correct.
Ms. Jacobson.
Just something that hasn't been talked about yet. I'm curious, not for tonight, but maybe before we vote next time, is how our enrollment looks between our AP, our honors, and our non-core elective classes in terms of that distribution. So in other words, how many, what number of students do you need to run an AP that you would run with versus what number of students would you need to run maybe a fashion or an intro to culinary? And is there a difference there? I'm thinking about this not only from the GPA weighting scale, but also our enrollment, FTE implication, things like that. So not necessary for right now, but just some of those things in the back of my mind going forward and how that may play out a little bit if we've given any thought of that.
Ms. Lieber?
Just two quick things. I was wondering if you had the opportunity to explore potential impact of not reporting the GPA.
So I did ask one of our interns who had some time on his hands to do a little exploration of that. He came back to me a few days later, and he said, "I've looked at as many high schools as I could find." He said, "There's no high school that I could find that does not report a GPA." And he went on to say that there are many things besides just having it on the transcript where things like certainly the Common Application scholarships ask for it, our FASA forms for financial aid ask for GPA calculation to be on there. So he wasn't able to find anything. But again, that was kind of limited research in a quick turnaround of a couple of days.
Then the second question I have is whether or not you included a question to families in your week of extra outreach about how families would feel if we did non-weighted GPA only. Because a lot of the discussion seems to be about anxiety of the change and how it impacts relatively this, that, and the other from this type of course to that type of course, or students who prefer to take music and art versus non, more core electives, or that change, where I wonder if there was no weighting, it would truly level the playing field. And you don't have to respond to that now because this is not to be a prolonged conversation, but I was wondering if you could get a little feedback from families about how they would feel about that. And I understand like probably that the big concern is from last year to next year, or the two years between that change. And that could be anxiety provoking for families because that would be a huge change, but I would be curious to hear that feedback.
Mr. Dwyer?
Last week, I asked that the goal was in making all of these changes to have as little impact on the vast majority of students as possible. And you're going to be making changes that might address some of the Board's questions, but I would imagine the goal remains the same, that if any change that you make will improve on limited impact and not go the other way. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Max Canelli?
First, Ms. Lieber, thank you for asking my question because, of course, I came quite entranced with that whole notion of just don't report a GPA and call colleges on what they say. They want to see rigor in grades, so show them rigor in grades, and then the average shouldn't matter. But if they can't agree, but damn, thank you for looking into it, though. I do appreciate it because I really thought that was quite a, would be an, I'd have no problem being groundbreaking, but I know all of those forms, and you've got to have something to put in.
We'd be more than groundbreaking.
Yeah, I know. All right. So I have no problem, but that's fine. I won't bring that back up again. I just want to reiterate, though, my concern about the Zero Level courses, that those get another look again just to see how many children are impacted. Having one child in those and knowing of many others, that that presented a really important option for a variety of reasons, from stress reduction, it was a more appropriate choice. Removing that, the choice then presented to them, and so I would hope that that could take another look just to see the number of children impacted. And then, just as a point to Mr. Dwyer's fault, I don't think the Board should think for, kid ourselves that this could have zero negative impact on any child. The point being, if we're trying to make an adjustment that is appropriate, part of that is acknowledging that some students may have been somewhat inappropriately inflated, is what we're saying. And we've used the word a couple of times, but I just think it's important that the Board has an understanding that certain movement down is appropriate in certain cases, and that's what this move is for, so that we can't hold out for zero movement down. That's not going to happen, and that's not what we're talking about, is what's prompting this need. But I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Dwyer's point, is that obviously, we're looking to do it right. We're looking for the more transparency. Again, I think everyone's on board with the name changes because, you know, you did point out some very interesting course names that we do have. But so finally, just again, appreciate looking into those Zero Level courses and numbers.
I think the operative word that I heard in Mr. Dwyer's comment was minimize, and that is absolutely the goal.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, thank you both for your presentation before this and for presenting to us again. If anybody has any questions about this topic over the next week, please forward them to Dr. Jones. Okay, we're going to start with pages five through seven, targeted enhancements.
And may I ask Senior Exec if you would come forward to the table, just so you're already up here, if you're likely to get questions on this section? Don't look too excited.
Sorry, I'm looking for a pen.
Can you read a pen?
No, I may have just been having my pencil put to some places. Thank you. Who wants to start us off?
Can I just make one comment to follow up?
Yes.
Having worked with three superintendents on the budget process and the struggle that they've had with getting Board members to ask questions in advance, I really do have to compliment this current makeup of the Board for sending in as many questions as you did because it certainly does help both the Board and the staff. Even though it creates a lot of work for the staff in a short time period, it still gets for better answers. So I compliment you for listening to Christine more than past Board members who are no longer on the Board used to listen to me.
I probably nagged more than you did. Ms. Pitko?
Just looking over pages five through seven, I have a question, and I don't know if it's for Dr. Jones or if it's for Mr. Mancusi. After the special ed audit, did we do any adjustments to our budget to put any addition into like case load versus workload or programs that they had suggested?
We continue our work in that area. Based on the audit and based on conversations with Dr. Jones and with Mr. Smaller, we do anticipate having a final product very shortly. If I could just speak for one minute, one of the questions that was asked by Mrs. Max Canelli was for if anybody could come and speak on behalf of the Board's investment into our homegrown Impact program and the impacts that Impact is having on our high school students and that DBT is having in our schools because those are parts of our enhancements. I would ask the Board to indulge us for a few minutes to allow our head clinicians from Fairfield Ward High School, Michael Saad, and from Fairfield Ludlow High School, Dr. Carrie Holskin, are here to just give you a brief overview of Impact, the positive impacts of Impact in year one, just a brief overview of DBT, and to answer any brief questions. Is that okay?
I was about to ask it anyway.
Okay, thank you so much. Mike and Carrie?
Hi, folks. Michael Saad, team leader at Fairfield Ward High School.
Carrie Holskin, team leader at Ludlow High School.
Did you want us to present, or were there questions?
Ms. Max Canelli?
Just for the sake of the Board, not that I think you need it, but it was question 137, to Mr. Mancusi's point, where I asked if the staff could be prepared to speak to the value. We've made a financial investment in these programs, in DBT, in Mind Up, in Impact, and in moving away from ESS, which represented the savings. But if that savings isn't, if we're not still serving our students as well, then it's money that could be, you know, penny wise, pound foolish. So I had asked the question, so I don't know if it'd be easiest to go program by program. But again, we look at, we're investing in this aspect of our children's education.
Right.
We'd like to hear more about how well it's being delivered, what kinds of students are being served, why it has been a worthwhile investment.
Okay, great. So just to start off, while we were ending last year and going into the summer, besides hosting Impact while we were, for our summer program students, Carrie and I worked tirelessly around planning, planning curriculum, planning documents, planning intake, referral forms, criteria basically for candidates for Impact. We inherited students as well from ESS, and that's the right thing to do. Those are students who were well-served at the time by ESS. I think if we take a look at some of the qualitative differences, and if I can go into that, you know, we had an external agency coming in and providing a clinical service as a clinic. Being respectful, I think that there was a limitation in terms of the working within an educational climate, even though they are called Effective School Solutions. There's a clinical staff that prides themselves as working clinically. Carrie and I come from a very extensive and broad background of having worked in schools and working clinically. And what we were able to do, and I believe our administrators, our leaders, saw that we were able to synthesize, bringing our history, you know, we're looking at 20-plus years each of us being in district and working with our colleagues. When Mr. Mancusi was at Ward for PPT today, one of the academic support teachers was there, and he asked, and I said, "Wow, this is a really good question for her." And I was pleased to know that what she said was, "It was more of a team effort. The administration district-wide had made great efforts to make sure that our culture, our room space includes our academic supports as well as making room for clinical, both individual, family, and group." And so this staff person reported, "It is much more of a team effort." You know, we work clinically with students and we work academically. We know our staff. The new hires who were brought on, I want to say humbly, are mentored by us as well as by our administrators. And they are, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, they're rock stars in terms of coming in and respecting staff and understanding that there's a learning curve for them. There's a learning curve for us being there. But I think in terms of the amount of group time, individual time, family time, family program time monthly, those are all happening in all three sites. That's for starters.
May I ask one quick follow-up to that?
Sure.
And I don't know if this is not an appropriate question, please don't hesitate to tell me that, but as the ESS students have transitioned to this Impact program, have, we lost any? Have any instead moved toward outplacement, as in the parents, whether unilaterally or not, have not been well-served by this, by our own program?
So I have to think about that. And I think there may be a variety of different answers. Data-wise, I can say, first and foremost, coming in from ESS to Impact, I think one thing that was clear, and I'm going to get to your point, was I think that there was, there was an initial pushback, meaning, "Why are you here? Where are our clinicians?" And what it allowed us to do is really kind of sift through, having a set of expectations that we formed about what we see as a good clinical, therapeutic, academic, integrated program. Our expectations were going to be a little bit more. And so we got pushed back about that we're not ESS. So if I take a look at some of those students, I mean, I'd have to look at my administrators.
If the question has to come back later, that's fine. Again, I know I'm putting you on the spot with that.
I can, you know, give you the short answer is that of all the ESS students that transferred to the Impact program, all of them have stayed in the Impact program. And fortunately, we do have one who is graduating at the end of the semester, who's going to be integrated back into the mainstream because she doesn't need the level of support anymore. So that's a success story.
Fantastic, yeah.
As Mike was saying, it was a tough adjustment because they were used to how the program was run. And I think we're providing more structure through the DBT curriculum. And I think that we have had some pushback on that because it is a little bit more demanding in terms of offering a curriculum.
The DBT, because it's curriculum, has by nature, it's a didactic nature. It is up to us to make sure that we are kindly sophisticated enough to make it didactic but experiential, so it's not like another class.
To make it fun.
And so what we do is we purposely set it up where there are two days of DBT. And that's intense as part of the week. Two days of group, more dynamic. And then either two and three, we actually have at Ward, we have a topic day where we pick a topic and we make sure that that topic is related to every student they've chosen. And it is more of a therapeutic, didactic nature.
Correct my phone. I thought that DBT was something that was going more staff-wide as well. Am I incorrect about that?
You, you want to answer?
Yeah, I think we're referring to how it's being utilized in the Impact program.
Okay.
But the counseling centers at our high schools do conduct DBT groups for all the students in the school. So that is, that is what's happening. But in our program, we do it twice a week.
So that was the initial investment, year one, to make sure before, while ESS was going on and before Impact was. Carrie and I both, having been team leaders for our consultation groups, have continued to be in that role influential in our consultation groups. But we've incorporated to make sure that Impact staff are also trained, versed in fluent in dialectical behavior therapy.
And so then, if I can have one follow-up to Dr. Jones. So for this item, budgetarily, and, sorry, I'm trying to do this off the top of my head, the only one that's actually coming with an increase this year is that we're investing more in Mind Up. Only the rest, we're now keeping the program that we have, working within it, within the current budget from last year. We're not needing any other additions to it. It's now what it's going to be, and it's just the internal staffing who would be working to improve it. Am I correct about that?
Feel free, Mr. Biggs.
Yes, Mind Up, and then we are training Riverfield staff in year one implementation of DBT. So that will have a cost attached to it. And that was in one of the responses. I have the figure in my pile over there.
But I might say, too, when we're talking about professional development, it's really about what is the, what is the focus on any one particular year. I look at the overall cost of the program. It's really your teachers, the people who are actually doing the work.
Right.
Because if you're doing a new, something like Mind Up, it means we're not doing, for instance, something maybe with literacy next year or something else. Because if you actually look at that whole budget as a whole, it's actually going down, not up.
Got it. All right, thank you.
And I might just say, too, I think they've done a terrific job. And I think we're really excited about it. And I, you know, I think one thing that has made Impact work is because it is our staff. And anytime you have staff and you're bringing in a consultation of any type, a firm or an organization, if the staff don't believe that they are providing a higher level of service than our own staff could provide, our staff don't buy into it, then it just doesn't, it doesn't work. And I think now, because it's our staff and they believe and they love the work that they're doing, that's a huge piece that you just can't compare Impact to ESS when you're talking about an outside provider. We're lucky we have the skill set in our district. Most, a lot of districts don't have what we have in people.
So to get Riverfield trained, it's going to be $13,750 for the year for next year in DBT.
So that would be their PD focus?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Any other questions on this?
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We all have, we also have Mr. Chase here. One of the questions was asked about Mind Up. Mind Up is being implemented at Mill Hill School and Sherman School this year. So if you would like him to come up and just give a brief overview of how that's going at Riverfield School, I don't mean Riverfield, I mean Mill Hill.
That'd be great.
Rob grabbed me out in the hallway and said, "We might be talking about Mind Up." So do you have any questions for the program?
Maybe a better sense of how it's impacting, whether it's, I mean, number one, it's, what's, what is the financial investment? What does it look like in the school? It's obviously, putting time into it means time is coming away from something else, whether it's not only time in the classroom, but as well as the professional development time of your staff. If they're doing that, they're not doing something else. Just getting the sense of how is this an investment that's worthwhile?
Okay. Professional development was minimal because it's a, it's a pretty intuitive program. It's very step-by-step. The text itself really is very scripted. They, each lesson is probably about a half hour. So the time that we're taking out right now in terms of instruction also has minimal impact. It's probably best used, we've been, we gave teachers some latitude with that, but typically, they're using their social studies, science, as like a health period perspective. The, the way that we've rolled it out for this year, I'll get to cost in a moment, the way that we've rolled it out this year is primarily trying to fill in, what we, what we did was we looked at the texts which run K-235 to see which elements, which lessons we felt were imperative for all children. I'd have to go back to the presentation that I gave you. We did a professional development at the beginning of the year, which had a presentation in it that kind of, kind of outlined what would be the best approach, which I want to say was lessons one through three, let's say, all children needed to get. And then we scattered based on what the grade levels were, what worked well with the current programs we have, Second Step. We blended in with some of our other mindfulness types of things that we talk about. So the cost, though, I could be wrong on this, but I don't think the Board has, I don't think any Fairfield public dollars have gone toward the program. It was a grant that Sherman and Mill Hill did. It was a grant that Sherman and Mill Hill did together. So I'm not sure if any Fairfield public school money actually has gone toward this at this point.
We've put $25,000 in the budget for MINDUP for the 11 or 10 elementary schools to include training fees, curriculum, the MINDUP license, and some supplemental coaching.
And again, so this is coming out of some combination of social studies and science time, but obviously, these are not standalone lessons. I assume for this to get any benefit from it, it's something that's going on all year.
They are, it's a little bit of both. Sorry, I feel like it's not on. There are standalone, they are by, of and by themselves, from the text, standalone lessons. We've minimized the number of them for this first year because we are trying to fit it in more effectively and not take time from some of the essential core subject areas. That being said, yes, of course, it is something that we've ingrained into more the daily ongoing behaviors, and we use certain language that kind of transcends throughout the days and the weeks that's synonymous with what the program is teaching.
Yeah, if I could just add, really, the whole goal of it, when you look at, from the lesson perspective, is to make sure that you're teaching children that self-regulation when they're starting to feel stressed, what are strategies that they have? That's the lesson component. The idea is not to have this K-5 as a lesson in social studies for six years, because you want those children to start to engrain those skills. When you first implement something like this, your kindergarteners and first graders have the same knowledge as your fifth graders.
Right.
So that first kind of year, but it takes, it takes a little bit of time just to introduce that skillset.
And mindfulness is also one of the components of DBT, so that's why this is a good, you know, starting point for our youngest children.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Yep, we're still on 5 to 7. So just a quick question, and some of this was covered in the answers here, but with regards to the STEAM in K through 2, I noticed the 1.9 FTE implication. So I have two questions. One, in Pi in the Sky, what additional staff for STEAM would be ideal if we were in an optimal situation where we could, you know, add one or two, especially in here? Because what I've noticed also is that there's time being taken away from the students for, I think it mentioned, like 45 minutes of time with the students for preparation or work with the curriculum and stuff, so...
Yeah, STEAM actually, I feel like is funded adequately because the K-1, 2 will be on the 6th day rotation, just like it is 4, 3, 4, 5. So it's just part of their actual rotation. So it's not like it's, it's not like an additional, I guess is what I'm trying to say. It's going to be on their elective rotation.
Okay, so we're not having a situation where there's, like, teachers bouncing around schools? We have...
The biggest challenge I think we'll have this year is we still have STEAM and Gifted that share, and we may very well have to separate those. I think because teachers may ask to do that. But that we won't know for staffing until we get to the end of the year. Our STEAM teachers really love teaching STEAM. So will they want to, you know, pick up more STEAM and let, hire another Gifted? We don't know until we get to the end of the year.
Okay, but you, so you feel that it's adequately budgeted for?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we move on, can you just go over the CLCS at the middle school? Just a brief overview of what's going to be happening and the costs involved.
As you know, this year, we just, we opened up a CLCS at Riverfield School. So some of our students will be entering middle school. Currently, we're projecting, and Mr. Goodison is working very closely with some families on returning, hopefully, two students from outplacements. And we're projecting to start the program with five or six students at Tomlinson Middle School. In terms of staffing the program, we're looking for a 1.0 special education teacher, a 1.0 licensed clinical social worker to work on mental health and, you know, social, emotional needs with our students and our families, to support our parents in supporting their children. And we're also, DBT currently is being implemented year-one in all of our middle schools this year. So that will be part of this program at Tomlinson Middle School. It'll kind of be a hybrid between the elementary and the IMPACT program and students, you know, this could conceivably be students who leave the CLCS eventually at the middle school, may enter into our IMPACT, the IMPACT program at the high school, if they still need that level of support.
And just as a reminder, you can see those staffing changes on page 137. That might be helpful for some of you.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I had asked, question 91, was about the CLCS in middle school. And so it says here, it would service up to eight students, but right now you have six that you're anticipating?
Five or six we're projecting, yes, right now.
Okay. Is there any chance that you would possibly end up with more than eight? I mean, because eight's the limit. So if you went over eight, you would need to have additional staff or you're basically...
Yeah, we would have to adjust our plan at that time. Right now, we know of potentially five, maybe six for next year to start the program. If it goes past eight, which it's always possible, the students can move into district. One year in a previous district, I had nine students move into the district that we had not projected for. So you would have to adjust at that time.
Okay, and I'm sorry, how many students are in the CLCS at Riverfields this year?
It's a program that is, was established for up to eight. Currently, there are six.
Okay, and it's, you're anticipating to keep it at six for next year at Riverfield as well? Or are any of those moving up to middle school?
Well, as we, you know, yeah. Eight is the max that we would like to keep.
Right.
Depending on the students, we could go maybe one over that. As we continue to work with building capacity and programming for students with social, emotional, and behavioral difficulties in the other elementary schools, you know, if we continue to struggle and we meet, our efforts are met with minimal success, it's always an option to move a student into, you know, the CLCS as needed.
Okay, and then the other question that I had asked, question 92, I just said, will there eventually be a need for a CLCS in the high schools? And the answer is our high school IMPACT program is our in-district program that addresses the needs of students with significant social, emotional needs. So IMPACT would be able to, so any students who are at the CLCS at Tomlinson, when they move on to either Ludlow or Ward, that what the IMPACT program can provide will be, will work for them? There wouldn't be any additional...
No, we should be able to meet their needs through the IMPACT program.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Lieber?
My apologies if I'm supposed to know this, but will our students who are at the CLCS at Riverfield, when they graduate to middle school, go to the Tomlinson program even though their zone school is Ludlow? Yes? Okay. That's an easy answer.
If they're remaining in the CLCS program, yes.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Two quick follow-ups to that. The opposite of Mrs. Gerber's question, is there any chance that we would make this investment in these positions and then there not be children who are taking advantage of them?
We, as in the CLCS at Riverfield, we hire staff. Obviously, we have to hire a teacher and a social worker based on, you know, our enrollment. But in terms of the support staff, we hire as we get more students in the program.
No, but my point, so we implement this program, where are these six children right now? I mean, are they, they're not in the Riverfield, I mean, it's not like we have six fifth graders. That's what I'm asking, is that I want to make sure that we're doing this, we actually have children who are going to be needing the program and will be served by it.
Hi, John Goodison, Special Ed Coordinator for the middle school. Currently, excuse me, of those potential six, two would potentially return from outplacement, two would transition up from the fifth grade program at Riverfield right now, and two we would most likely roll in from our current programs in middle school right now.
Okay, that's what I want to... And then also on the topic of districting, do they stay with their Tomlinson classmates, which means they would all be districted to Ward? Or do they return to their home school district based on where they went to elementary school?
We really deal with those case by case. It's kind of like our CLC students.
So it might be an option that even if they should be going to Ludlow, that for the sake of the social supports, they might continue?
They may, and some of them may go to Walter Fitzgerald. And what we do at the district level is, it's actually me that does that, I reach out to the counselors and the people that are working with those children, and they advise us on what impacts that will be depending on where students need to go, just like we do with our CLC students.
One question and one comment that I would like to get the staff's affirmation that I've understood this correctly. The question that followed up, I think, on the other side of the table, I forget which of the three of you asked it is, are there any recommendations coming out of the SPED audit that will require budgeted resources that you have not budgeted for? I presume that it's hard to say, we've decided to do this, and whether that came specifically as a recommendation, or that the audit caused the staff to be thinking of other things and decided to implement. It's hard to answer whether which one of those happened, but is there anything in the audit that you know currently now that you would have, in all likelihood, wanted to do next year and you've not budgeted for it?
I think what we did request in this year's budget was directly related to the audit, particularly in terms of the high school and the request for an additional special education high school coordinator, so they could really get more involved in working with the special ed staff at each of the high schools and not be spread so thin. Just at Fairfield-Ludlow High School last year, there was almost 600 PPTs, many of which the coordinator oversees and is requested to attend. Fairfield Ward High School had close to that amount of PPTs as well. So when you're running from high school to high school to really do a lot of PPT coverage, it's important because many of the people, many of the PPTs that we attend have attorneys and advocates and staff really request the support and the guidance of our coordinator. Additionally, we added the high school, you know, we're asking for an additional high school special ed teacher to be part of an initial evaluation team that came out of the audit.
If I might add to that too, Mr. Dwyer, the, probably the only position that is not in here, and it's reflected on page 32 where somebody asked about the 21 staff that were not in the budget, I went ahead and gave you all 34.5, which is really where it started. The 21 were the positions we really debated. One of those was the evaluation team for middle school. It is highly likely that after this year, when we fine-tune that at high school, we would be ready to look at that for middle school, but we weren't quite ready.
Okay. So the statement I want to make is that various questions came up, but 129 and 127 I'll mention because they happen to be the questions I asked, but we have an outplacement savings of $400,000. And that's because staff have worked hard with people to keep people in district. In the decision the board made that supported the staff recommendation to combine the general ed preschool, pre-K, quote, saved us $250,000. But when you look at the, on pages 5 through 7, and I think it relates to questions 36 and 37, the money that we're investing in the IMPACT program, the CLCS, the DBT, the ECC evaluation, the ECC consultation services, and some of the PARAs, we probably are investing about $1,303,000, $1,403,000 in serving students who need extra help. I won't call it special education because it's children who need special services, period. And we're paying for that partly by saving the $650,000 and reinvesting it in a different form of serving the same students. And so what I would be a little bit concerned about is that some other boards in town might focus on pages 5 through 7 and say, "Look at all this new money you're spending." And that's not what is happening. We're repurposing money that we've saved so that we can better serve these students. And that's the conclusion I have drawn from comparing the savings with the extra money that we're spending. And so net-net, when you think of all the improvements that we're making to the quality of teaching to that group of students, we're not spending a lot of, quote, "extra money." And that's the, that is the conclusion I've come away from, in that I would want this board and staff to explain to Board of Selectmen and First Selectmen and Board of Finance and RTM. So I don't want to tell that story if it's not true.
No, I appreciate the comment. And there was a question, I think it came from Mrs. Vitale, if we didn't have the IMPACT program or some of the other programs that support students' social, emotional well-being, what would that estimated cost be? And quite honestly, it was a little difficult to answer the question, but I consulted with the staff in those programs, and we came up with 16 kids. And that, just 16, and that was a conservative estimate. When you're talking about students with significant social, emotional needs, particularly high school students, oftentimes you're looking at expensive day treatment programs and in some cases, expensive residential programs. So your cost on that was well over, I think, was 1.7 million, close to that?
It was. And one of the things we did was look at the chart on 151 where our outplacement chart shows up in the gross tuition. And if you look just at our other outplacement, it's $114,000 is what it's averaging. So we looked at that $114,000 for our actual FPS average, and then looked at those, that number 16, and what that would actually mean to the district. And that's just one, really one program.
Our staff did an excellent job this past year working with our families, developing programs to return to the Fairfield Public Schools, but that's only because the board is invested in the type of programs that we need in order to maintain students in district.
Thank you.
Ms. Maxic, can I lead?
And then to follow up on Mr. Dwyer's question, because I'd asked in 138, question 138, about, I mean, the SPED audit arose from one of my fellow board members asking superintendent to make a prom, you know, either wanting to make a vote at the board table to allocate money to this and being promised we would do a SPED audit. And then, as we were told would frequently be the case, when you do an audit looking for cost efficiencies, they come back with recommendations to spend more, which we are doing in a way that I think is very educationally responsible. But I still come back to there, is there anything that we're going to be able to point to, to other town bodies? Because I cannot imagine, we're not going to get that question, of any more tangible savings that have resulted from that SPED audit? Because I think saying something to the effect of cost savings will be realized over time as we continually refine our value, that might make sense here, but I think they would be looking for something more tangible.
I think we will be able to do that, and I think if we go in and look at our consult line, we go in and we look at our outplace tuition, our gross tuition, because not only did we save 400, we would have expected in our 1920 budget to have our annual increase of 1.1 million. So I think we actually can put that on paper and we can work on that.
I think that would be good to do.
And the larger number is cost avoidance.
Before I let you go on this, can you just give a brief description of how the evaluation teams are going to work at the high school, how they're different from what's happening now?
Yes. I have a visual, I'm hoping it helps make sense for you of this. And I do have to thank my partner, John Goodison, for helping me put this together. So there is one for the ECC and there's one for the high school. The concept is similar, so if we can just turn to the high school one, you'll see the items in blue, those are members that will be part of, they're core members, that will be part of an initial evaluation team. be part of an initial evaluation team that's required to determine eligibility for special education. So we're proposing that for the high school, we hire a 1.0 special education teacher to be part, to be the special education teacher that will be the member of the initial evaluation team, which will service both high schools. Currently, at Fairfield Ward High School and Fairfield-Ludlow High School, we have, there's five, between the two high schools, there's five school psychologists. So we're proposing that one of those school psychologists will be part of the, there's a mistake on here, so I apologize, I just caught this. We currently have 5.0 FTE school psychs in our high schools. So one of those would be part of, one of those would be on the core team as the school psychologist. Each of the high schools would then have 2.0 FTE for school psychologists. That same would be for the speech pathologists. We currently have 5.0 FTE speech pathologists between the two high schools. One speech pathologist would be assigned to this core initial evaluation team, and each high school would then have 2.0. The responsibilities of the folks on the evaluation team is obviously to attend the PPT1s, that's the referral PPT where you design an evaluation. They would complete the evaluation, they would write up their evaluation reports, and they would work in consultation with the receiving special ed team at the receiving school on the development of IEP goals and objectives, and just completion of the IEP. They could assist also with triennial evaluations if time permits. They could assist with PPT facilitation, and they could assist building level teams and any other special-related responsibilities. This, I think, is an extremely exciting proposal to me, because one of the things that did come out of the audit was some inconsistencies across the district in terms of the IEP development process. This would help us provide more consistent programming in our schools, so it didn't matter what school your child attended, they would get a similar program based on their individual needs.
My takeaway from the audit had been, obviously, I liked that idea of having someone, first of all, that could help relieve some of the time demands on our housemasters and probably headmaster, too, on occasion. But what's catching my eye here that I hadn't realized was part of this was that there's that much of a load on the initial evaluation teams, because how much, I know that as a, when I'm teaching sophomores, and I'm starting through child find, obviously, we have to have a procedure in place because something could emerge at any point. However, I know I find it very distressing if we're only unearthing things in high school. So I was wondering if you could speak more to the nature of, I hope this is the best way to say this, what has not been caught or addressed? Because I know one thing, in our last presentation with the SRBI process, we're talking about how those early interventions are preventing these numbers and are, you know, obviously hopefully being followed up on. So what's the nature of high school that we're, at this point, have such numbers that we need the support for the initial evaluation teams?
It's an excellent, excellent question. We have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of PPTs annually at our high schools. That significantly diminishes the time that the high school coordinator can spend working more on programming or evaluation processes. Child find issues are a concern. That's why we're making this proposal, to increase consistency. And the high school coordinator position for this high school proposal is crucial to this.
I might just add to that. Child find starts in elementary. Right. That's one of the reasons we changed the EPF role this year. They've had intensive training all year long, very much about that. And we're trying to make sure it's a real balance between making sure we have interventions to help children grow and be successful, but not to overcompensate where you also don't go through a referral process, because they're doing so well, especially in elementary, because the teacher helps them so much, and it's a different environment than when you move to middle school and high school. So it's a balance between those two. But it is an interesting spot to be in that we are having that amount. We also have new students that move in. We had, this is probably why Karen's raising her hand.
I would just like to add a comment there.
Come up to the mic if you would care.
Karen Campbell, Director of People's Services at Ward. The evaluations, the Level 1 evaluations that we see at the high school are often about mental health issues. Many of them are about mental health issues, because you know that many mental health issues emerge in adolescents. So a lot of the Level 1 PPTs are around those issues. The other students that we find struggle at the high school level are students who have not had the advantage of our curriculum K-8. They are students who have moved into the district later, often from neighboring districts or, you know, from around the world. But they're not typically students who have been in the Fairfield Public Schools K-8. Those kids, we absolutely are, you know, are finding much earlier.
That's, I guess, the assurance I was hoping for, that with all of what we're putting in, that that would be the case. Thank you.
So is this team only for newly identified students, or they're going to be working with students moving up from middle school who already have an IEP?
This team primarily is being proposed at this time for initial referrals, because the, we are getting inundated with initial referrals at the high school level. And I agree with Ms. Maxine Canelli, that is a concern. That's why we're just proposing this for that at this time.
Thank you for the clarification on this. Any additional questions on these pages? Ms. Jacobson?
Hi. I ask a lot of my questions ahead of time, but, so my questions are more pertaining to some of the answers that we got, and just a quick follow-up on them. My first question is on question number 47, and it has to do with some of our per pupil allocations, and specifically the science materials that we had put in, make a lot of funding for science materials for next generation science for this school year. And a lot of that is not being spent. And a lot of the answers to several other board members' questions is that you just weren't finding a lot of high-quality materials. And I mean, NGSS has been around for a number of years at this point, and I'm sure Pearson was just really ready to go. So I'm wondering, what is it in the materials or texts that you're looking for that you're not finding in regards to them being not high-quality enough at this point?
I think the best way to explain this is that the inherent nature of the NGSS units and the nature of textbooks as they currently exist are at odds. If you think about, so much of what the NGSS is talking about is, while there are certainly, I think the best way to put it, let me take a step back, I'm sorry. NGSS, in its implementation, is in many ways, enfold all the sciences in any given unit. So the traditional biology text or the traditional chemistry or physics text no longer really apply, because strands of all sciences fold into each of these units. What we're finding that the textbook publishers are moving to is more compilation of materials drawn from specific science content areas and linked by theme or by the phenomenon of the unit. They are not really ready for that. We're working with one or two publishers that are on the edge of that, and we are, we may begin to try one of those in one of our courses, for example, at one of the levels. But in my discussions with other, with science people in other districts around the state, the preferred method right now seems to be that teachers within a department, teachers within a district are working together to identify materials to support their curriculum, working through those materials over the course of the year, coming to some resolution on what the most quality materials are, and then pinning that down as essentially a homegrown unit that they will house online. It goes from buying a textbook and not having to deal with it for five or six years, you know, other than the initial implementation, to almost an annual ritual of culling through what you've gathered to make sure links still work, that the materials are up to date. And that is, seems to be the growing trend in supporting science implementation.
Okay, so, and we're rolling it out this year in high school at least, and K, no, K-8 next year or this year? This year? Last year?
We are rolling it out most heavily in high school. We are working to implement in K-8 this year. We're doing a lot of the groundwork in K-8 this year.
Okay. And we didn't, the same number is being held somewhat flat for next year. You're not anticipating any needs from what you're not getting this year in next year's budget then?
No, I think, and this is part of the struggle with, we've had in working with the teachers, is it's an easier job to do when you've got something to kind of go and run with. And what we really have to focus back on with the teachers, and what they understand we have to focus back on, is that the greatest change in the NGSS is the instructional methodology that's changing. And so that's where we're really spending our time. I will tell you that in separate conversations with our middle school teachers and with some of our high school teachers, they identified with me that one of the first things they need to work on is starting to think about how they're going to raise the level of their reading knowledge in order to help their students access the content. So that's an acknowledgement that the instructional change is more weighing on their minds right now. They know the content. And this is going to take, you know, to do this really well, this is going to take several years to make those changes.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, is this on page 30, 31, or is this a different, because I thought we were doing 30, 31, but it sounds like this is...
Instructional, right?
I'll answer whatever question you have.
I think that was like supplies and texts, or?
Oh, I jumped onto the wrong question, sorry.
Sorry, I was just, I'm trying to follow it, because there's so many questions and answers, and I wasn't...
I went to the next area, because it's on the same page as my question for instructional.
Okay, good. I just wasn't sure where I was supposed to be looking.
Okay, I'm sorry. I do have another one, though, under the right area. Okay, sorry about that, guys. I'm going to jump to question number 43, please, program assessment. So, Mr. Cummings, last year we had a bump in STAR assessment, and this year we've got another 9,000 bump in STAR assessment. Why is that?
It's the cost of the per pupil license.
Mm-hmm. And what is the difference in that per pupil? But we have less pupils in elementary who primarily take this.
Well, the test is given all the way up. We have less students overall that take it at the second, at the high school level, but it is given to students all the way up through eighth grade.
No, I know that, but our enrollment is down for some of that, right?
I think we're also up in early literacy in that as well.
I would have to find out for you with the cost differential, you know, if you're looking for the specific number, I'd have to get that for you.
So every year, basically, STAR is increasing their cost to us for the test?
At this point, yes.
Mm-hmm. Roughly by how much? Do you know?
No, I don't know. I'd have to find out.
I'm going to speak, just from my experience, because I've been with that company for over 20 years, I have found they've stayed, not flat like any other company, but it's pretty much if you used to have a 1%, you might have one year a half a percent, but they're not, they don't have wild increases per student.
Is there an increase to them for some reason while they're increasing the cost?
I think they're like every other, unfortunately, company that we kind of deal with in school business. Same way with tuition and everything else, they tend to go up on your annual cost adjustment, and they can be half percent, 1%. But they stay relatively, relatively the same. It's not like huge swings. But we did increase, I know, in our early literacy, which is also part of STAR, we did not have as many people taking that assessment last year. So it wouldn't surprise me if our numbers are up for the little ones.
Our first year, too, we were also part of a consortium pricing, which I don't believe exists right now.
Partly, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Our first year, we were part of a consortium pricing, which I don't believe exists right now. It was kind of an introductory rate.
Okay. Also, college board fees are going up for PSAT 9 and the other PSATs again, as they were did again last year. Is that the same thing, increased per head cost by college board?
I believe that is true, but I will have to confirm that for you.
Okay. And I know we're expanding in this area more world language assessments, so I understand that piece of the increase whatsoever. Some of our differences next year from what we had for going on the last year's budget was the post-secondary surveys not being included?
They are not included.
Okay. The SAMTEC assessment is obviously gone because we've cut that.
That's right.
Right? And accelerated math testing is going away?
No, accelerated math does still exist. We, I think we did not list it because it's not really an assessment, it's more of a tutorial program.
So is, does that belong in this bucket, or?
It's in that account, because that's where it exists.
Uh-huh.
But I think we could make an argument that it should really be moved into the text and materials.
Okay.
It's a tutorial, it's a, as you know, more of a supplemental program.
So that might answer part of my last question on this, is when I add up all these numbers, it comes to 226, 430, but yet our line item for next year is 235, so about 9,000 more than what these add up to. So I'm guessing that 3,000 is part of that 9,000 for the accelerated math that is included in this bucket?
Excuse me one second, I'm just looking it up.
Accelerated math was included in that line.
It was, okay.
That was $9,000.
Accelerated math is nine?
Yeah.
For next year? It's three this year?
I don't think that's...
That's in my budget Q and A.
Yeah, it's $9,000.
Okay, so then that gives me the divide between what's on this piece of paper and what the amount is, is the accelerated math for $10,000. Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Maxine Canelli?
Two quick questions. One follow-up, and I, sorry if I somehow miss this. Did you say the post-secondary survey is being cut?
That is not in our budget this year.
And may I ask why? Since it's part of our district improvement plan?
I don't know if you want to answer that.
Yeah, I think what we are trying to do is look at, is there a better way that we can do it instead of using the same company that we've used? Doesn't mean that we're not going to do it as part of our district improvement plan, but we are not happy with the results necessarily that we're getting, or the number of student responses that we're getting. We think we can do a better job.
And so what will be, I mean, again, I've been very open about the fact that that's one of the things in the district improvement plan that I'm most keenly interested in. And so I'm, somehow I missed all of that, so I'm sure Mr. Cummings is kicking himself for having referenced it and weakened me up to this, but can we hear more, and if not now, if I can ask for next Tuesday, if we can hear more about what the plan is for that? And then secondly, to Mr. Hahn, on this page regarding the homebound instruction, now that we have the Chromebooks, you know, other things, you know, things are changing, you know, we used to be looking at Plato as a means to serve those homebound students. Is there anything on the technology front that we can use to support those students who are homebound, medically expelled, et cetera, that would save us on the cost of an instructor? I mean, I'm not, I can't recall what the hours requirement is for a body there, but is there any way that technology can be used to serve those students and realize some budget savings? Or perhaps that's already in here?
Right. I think, I think looking at it from what do we currently have and how do we explore additional opportunities through Google Classroom and some things that we have built in that are zero cost. So it's expanding upon what we have with the Plato platform. So it's something to be looking at as we move forward, yes.
Okay. And I might just note on that, where I was talking about the staffing, that 30 odd that didn't get included, there are two positions that were for, or actually maybe three, for hybrid learning for high school, which is exactly what you're talking about, to really enhance that, but we did not build it in for this school year, this next...
that, but we did not build it in for this school year, this next budget.
So that's something that's still kind of in the works, which is just not ready to roll out yet?
We were very excited about it, but we, that was one of those, when the budget started where it did, and now it's at 4.99, it ended up coming out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And don't worry, Mr. Arno, and I'm working on something for you.
Whatever you want.
I do appreciate it.
Any other questions on this section? Mr. Peterson, sorry?
Sorry, this is just a different character of question on section 409, Student Activity Expenses. Dr. Johnson, your answer to my question about this, I asked about, for breakout of the high school, 13,000 per high school sports...
Sorry, what number?
Oh, I'm sorry. Object 409.
And your question number?
My question, oh, I'm sorry, my question number 68.
Thank you.
Your answer, you know, I'd asked for a breakout, whether it's uniforms, that sort of thing. You said, it comes as the costs mentioned, including transportation increase, or due to increase in the cost of officials, transportation, and security slash fire personnel for large crowds? My question that kind of sparked is, are we, are we adding more people? Is there a security need that we feel we need to address?
I'm not sure who wrote the answer. I believe it could be Mr. Collin. Did you write this one? Oh, Doreen, can you come forward?
Headmasters will come forward.
There's only two of them, we only have two of us to get them. We have hired staff for security at some of the events where we expect a larger crowd, so that's a new thing that we've been doing, and that's been added to our sports costs, that's where it's coming from. So, for instance, we may hire two or three teachers to help us with crowd control during some of the Ward-Ludlow games or during some of the playoff games, so that may be part of the increase too. The fire marshal indicated to us that we should have, on our inside games, certainly we should have a fire watch there as well when we have crowds over 500. There's a certain number between 500 and 1,000.
But this is, this is staff, this is not hiring police, or, there's no, there's no security concern that you have, it's more of logistical concern it sounds like.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't...
More safety than a security concern.
Yeah, more safety than security.
Okay, that's, that's all I really needed to know.
Any other questions on this section? All right, moving on to Other Purchased Services, pages 36 to 37. Actually, I take note, we did Supplies, Texts and Materials, 38 to 39, sorry. Okay, we can come back to that if anybody has a question. So moving on to Other Purchased Services, pages 36 to 37. Tuition, pages... I'm sorry, Mr. Peterson.
Sorry, I should raise my hand faster. I just, just to go back to the, I asked, question 72 about the bus routing software training. I guess my fundamental question, looking at your answer, which makes it seem like a lot of different people use the software. What's the, what are the number of people in the, in the, in the office that are responsible in some fashion for dealing with bus routing?
That would be from Ms. Mansell, she's coming.
There are three of our staff at the Transportation Office. There's a first student staff person that also works on the software. I've been delving into it myself. The Tech Department has gotten involved in it because it's so integrated with Infinite Campus. And we also, the trip tracker part of it, we rolled out this year for athletic trips. So we had, we trained the athletic directors and the secretary of the Athletic Department. If we roll this out to field trips, which is, you know, a possibility, all the secretaries at the buildings, you know, we have to plan out how that would be rolled out and who would have to be trained, but it would have to be district-wide.
All right. I guess with that answer, we're not paying for the training of the first student personnel, are we?
No, but we would include them in with our training.
At no extra cost to us, I imagine?
Right.
Yeah, all right, that's, that's fine, thank you.
Ms. Mansell.
And I'm sorry, I did not submit this question, I didn't think of it, but as a, I can't recall what exactly the timeline is with NIAS, because NIAS, obviously, once they do get us the timing on that report, in addition to commendations, there are the recommendations which can have budget impact. So what, I don't remember where we are on the timing of that. I see that the costs are down for it, for the cycle, but where actually are we where we can expect news about that?
We'll let the headmasters answer that since they're on different cycles.
So I'll go first, is this on?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Yes, better? Testing? Good? Okay, there we go. I'll go first because it is a different cycle for the two schools. Fairfield Ward is under the NIAS 2020 vision for future NIAS. So we had our collaborative conference visit already this past fall. In October, a team of four came and visited our school and looked at our self-reflection report and gave us a number of commendations and recommendations to move forward with. They'll come back again now, two years from now, in the fall of 2020. NIAS hasn't quite defined what that process will look like. We're assuming at that point, based on some of the training that we've been to and some of the conversations, that they'll be asking us what we did with their recommendations. But they actually come back for another visit, and it will be a slightly larger group, we've been informed.
So Ludlow is on, 2019, this March of this year, March 10th, will be visited by the visiting committee, and the lion's share of what's budgeted for this current school year will go into that visitation. We have to host them, we have to put them up in a hotel, we have to feed them, we have to prepare materials. So, so the, what's been spent so far has been on some nominal copying and deposits regarding the visit, but, but, you know, those bills will start rolling in in March. After that, we do not expect to hear back from NIAS in terms of the results of their accreditation report until, into the fall, if not even the winter of 2019. And at that point, there might be some initial recommendations, but, but for the most part, we would be on the hook for a two-year update on any recommendations that they might make, and at that point is when we might have some budget implications. So, so once this, for Ludlow, once this cycle is done this school year, there should not really be anything further.
And so while I'm interested in what they had to say, I recognize that's not part of this conversation, but will those, I know the last time they came, that was posted on each individual school's site, was the NIAS report. Is that, has Ward's been posted and will Ludlow's be posted?
So our self-reflection report has been posted. We have not, we have received the NIAS response from the visiting team, however, it's not public yet.
Oh, okay. And, but that, when it is public, that will be posted as well?
Yes, we, I believe they gave us a date of sometime in February.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson? I saw it.
I'm sorry, this was a second question that I did not submit, it came up on a, on a second pass, just if we can clarify something in object 321, Professional Development and Curriculum Writing. It says the majority of the increase in this category is in program implementation for language, arts, science, math, and world language, but according to the Course Review Curriculum Matrix, 1920 should be a review year for math. I noticed there's large increases in, in the language, arts, science, and world language sections, there's also a large increase in the math section. I was wondering if you could provide some color on why there's a large increase if we're in a review year.
Excuse me one second, I'm just looking up for the detail.
Sure, no problem. In section 321, it's line 54174.
What page is that?
On page 82. About $7,000.
The, in, excuse me. In math, the, one of the things that we are spending money, are looking to spend money on is the proposed magnet-type program at McKinley. That's one of the cost differentials there. We also are starting program review. There is going to be some gathering of staff to begin to look at the current curricular units this next summer, to start to determine where we might want to begin to make changes in the program review.
All right, now I'm confused because I thought we were not proceeding with the magnet, magnet at McKinley, or am I incorrect about that?
We had not marked that one off the list. We did a magnet school, not a magnet program, so staff have continued to do their review.
All right, but, all right.
The sleeper?
For clarification, was that the Math Academy we talked about?
Yeah, I realized, I just said that incorrectly.
Any other questions on this section? Okay, moving on, tuition, pages 34 to 35. Ms. Jacobson?
Just on excess cost, number 57 is the question. It says that the rate of reimbursement is expected to be less than the 75% projected for the school year, and down to 73%. Is there a reason, is that because of less available state funds, or just what we're anticipating where we would fall in eligibility?
We projected 75% last year. It did not come in at that.
In the state?
Yes, I think it came in at 71%. So we're, we projected 73% for this 1920, 1990, 1920 budget.
Can I follow up on that? Specifically, is that because more districts have asked for more money, and so therefore the pro-rata share goes down, or is it because the state has allocated less money?
Ms. Mansell, could you answer that question?
Because I think that's the essence of the question, right? And it might be a combination of both, but...
Yeah, right. I can look up excess cost in a second, but I was just worried.
I'm not sure on whether or not they allocated less. I don't think they did, but I'm not sure.
I don't think so either.
So it is a function of, you know, distributing that pot of money between all the districts that submit...
Because it's within available appropriations. It's not, it's within available appropriations, it's not as needed...
Pot of money, right.
As you qualify, right, exactly.
And so I think the, the true answer is that it's resulting from more districts asking for more money, and the pro-rata share goes down because the state has more or less level funded that line item.
So then my follow-up to that is, for next year, it's held flat. And I know you're anticipating 73, and if we only get 71, are we anticipating that the pot, people inside the pot will be less next year? I'm just questioning, are we comfortable and confident at a 73% if this year is only 71%? Given the increased need on an annual basis, and are we likely to think that the state is going to increase the pot? I, you know, I'd rather us project lower and not have a shortage, but that's...
And putting a number on it, that 2% gap, what's 2% worth?
It's a lot.
You know, what's the risk factor if it comes in at 71 instead of 73% as budgeted?
Actually, we did get 73% last year.
I apologize.
Oh, you did?
We used to project 75% because we were, we were...
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's budgeted at the same percentage as this year?
Yes, I apologize on that one.
Not a problem, just wanted to make sure we're confident in our projection. Thank you.
You good?
I am, yeah, sorry.
No, I'm okay.
You're okay? Christine, Ms. Bicka?
Sorry, this was not in my questions I submitted. Page 34, Summer School Transportation. I'm curious if this number keeps going up every year as the enrollment at the ECC and students with special needs keeps going up, and should we expect to see this number greater for next year if we keep seeing enrollment go up?
That's a very interesting question, and it's an excellent question and one that we've had a lot of discussion on. We have met with staff, and we continue to meet with staff and to review, you know, eligibility criteria for extended-year services, because the number of students who receive extended-year services is quite, quite high in Fairfield, so...
And I might just say, next week we will get into the transportation line, so we can give you more detail to that. That's a question that, if we could respond more detail for you...
Absolutely.
...now, next Tuesday.
Any other questions on this? All right, Contracted Services, pages 32 to 33.
I'm sorry, I have one question. If we could just go back?
If we can go back.
Sorry, for the tuition, so I had asked question 107, and I just had a question about the numbers, because I, I have last year's budget book, or the current year's budget book, and, because it says here, "The actual projected cost increase in settlement agreements projected in the 1920 proposed budget from the 1819 budget is 559, 228, when factoring in the 384, 691 costs listed under the settlements/legal placements line."
If you look at page 152 of...
Oh, I see it, I see it, sorry. Okay, I was looking in the wrong place. I got it, okay.
At 384,000 plus is where that difference came from.
Got it, so, so that, yeah, because my overall question was just that we seem to have seen a rise from the current year to projected, I understand, from 30 to 39. And I was just concerned, you know, whether this is just an anomaly, or this is a potential trend, because, I mean, the increase, I mean, I understand in other lines that we went down, but having that go up by, by nine, I just, and especially because the cost, like I said, was about a little less than a million dollars.
It's another excellent question, and it's something that has our attention. We believe as we continue to build staff capacity and our in-district programs, that we hope that number does not continue to rise. In many instances with the settlement agreements, when we are in a mediation situation, we do have to measure our exposure to see what the best interest of the district is while maintaining that collaboration with families.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Mansell.
As a follow-up, so this is for the unilateral outplacements. What category of disability do you find, or is there a common theme of category of disability that, of those students? Again, I look towards a, if we had blank here, that could be avoided. Again, I look towards a, if we had blank here, that could be avoided.
The single most expensive settlement agreements we have are for adolescents with significant mental health needs. And then at the elementary level, we do see some students who have some significant learning needs.
So, in other words, things that, obviously those aren't coming up then because certainly the former, I don't see us being able to address in-house, and the latter likewise, not something that can be addressed in-house?
Well, it's, we mediate back and forth on what we think we can appropriately provide, and we, you know, work with the parents to come to the best resolution for the district and the family.
And I might just add too, at Desco, you hear a lot of talk about burden of proof in Connecticut, and we are one of those states. So, we have to really weigh, when we're working with a family, what is the cost of litigation to go all the way through due process versus what, you know, what is the cost for a settlement? And we look at all those different components to make sure that... Go ahead.
If I could just say, thank you for bringing that up. Because we do, when we're in a settlement or in mediation, we do weigh the district's risk if we went to mediate, went to due process and we did not prevail. And just preparation for a due process hearing, which I would say the average due process hearing could be five to seven days or more, it's $10,000 to $15,000 per day just for us. And then if we don't prevail, we're on the hook for a cost of, you know, the parent attorney fees.
Ms. Jacobson?
I know you were saying that there were significant needs, maybe different needs, elementary, high, and middle for the unilateral placements, and they had significant needs, but they're not being placed by PPT.
Right.
So they have significant needs, but you're saying, since you're not placing them through a PPT process, I read that as you feel you can service them in district.
Yeah, yes.
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 Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Contracted Services, pages 32, 33, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, and I feel bad. I sometimes feel like we're shifting very quickly from, you know, issues of very, you know, student concern, like really deep issues to, I'm going to ask about air conditioning now. So apologies if that sounds insensitive, but it's, the page numbers are here. I asked in question 73 about the, my question 73, about the $100,000 that's being budgeted for a, for a bid for the air conditioning project. And Dr. Jones, your answer, whoever came up with the answer, said that we're anticipating the final design documents and estimates will be compiled for us to make a capital project request to the town bodies. Is that, is that the current plan?
I'm going to let Mr. Cullen speak to that. I think it's, it's not a, it really is about consulting to look at all of our buildings to see what we would have to do to air condition our buildings. So it's before that actual capital process. But Mr. Cullen, if you'd like to add to that?
Yes. Hello?
It's not working very well.
So the plan is to develop a written format to meet with the town purchasing director, which I'm doing actually this week, to send out a bid so we can hire hopefully an architectural engineering firm with collaboration of an HVAC contracting firm that can go and look at every single school building and give us a document, drawings and documents to tell us what would be needed to bring that building into mechanical means of fresh air, air conditioning, and while we're at it, since all the ceilings would have to come down, fire protection systems.
Sure. No, I guess I understand that, and I, I'm in general favor of this. I just don't understand why we're moving to bid a project that we haven't explicitly discussed at this table. That's a district-wide process that would impact all of our school buildings. We've discussed it in the abstract sense, and it's obviously come up in our discussions with other town bodies, but we've not discussed it in detail here, or we're moving to implement a bid for it.
Can I just make sure it's clear that it's not to actually do the work?
No, no.
It's for the design and development, and is the building going to be able to hold HVAC equipment, condensers on the roof, all of that?
Again, I understand that. I understand it's in anticipation of moving forward with the project, but we haven't, as a board, decided to move forward with the project yet.
I might add to that. I think because we did discuss it as a board, and the board, you know, we felt, gave its direction that that's something we may want to explore, being in this budget is absolutely doing that. And if the board wants to pull it out of the budget, that's how the board will speak, that it's not a project you want to do this year.
Yeah, we had to put a placeholder in for it.
Right, right.
No, no, I get that. I just, I want to, I want to evaluate for myself whether the vote that we're taking on the budget is the vote we're taking on whether we're going to make this capital project request, which seems to imbue this with somewhat more importance, this $100,000 line.
Could I comment on that? I asked a similar question, I forget which number it is in the book, but I thought the board was favorably disposed to investigating what would it cost to create a long-term plan to slowly air condition all of the buildings? And I take this budget request to be, here's what it will cost us to put a good plan together, because as soon as we put a plan together, somebody's going to ask, well, who consulted with you, and how good are these numbers in the plan and whatnot? And it costs money to do that. But it may be that just our gut tells us that's going to be a hard sell, and this is not the year to try and do that. And so I think Mr. Peterson asks a decent question. Should we keep it in here, knowing that it's for, so that we can tell the town, this is a five to seven to 10-year plan to get all of the buildings air conditioned? Because I thought people around town were basically supportive of thinking of it in those terms.
No, and I want to, I want to stress that I'm not, I'm not signaling, you know, disfavor for that project. I actually think it's something that we should explore. I just, seeing it in here and thinking that, well, this is the decision we're making as a board to go ahead with that. If that is the general sense of the budget line item, I want that to be out in the public.
Ms. Asa?
Well, I think, to Mr. Peterson's point, one of the things is, it's kind of a double-edged sword. Because in order to get to the point of discussing whether it's something we want to explore, unfortunately, some of this legwork needs to be done. And this is something that we have discussed somewhat in Finance Committee, you know, when we had those hot days and we were kind of in the thrills of it. Unfortunately, I don't think we can have those high-level discussions without this information. So, I kind of get the feeling that's why this was in the budget. So I see what you're saying with regards to that, but I would just like to say that I am in agreement with you that supporting this does not mean that we're just saying right now that, yeah, we're planning on coming to town bodies with air conditioning for all the schools. But it's something that we have said that we've wanted to talk about as a group, and unfortunately, I think we need to get this, you know, reconnaissance done before we can have those discussions.
Ms. Lieber?
I also think you asked a really great question and made a good point, that when we discuss sort of in the abstract, going ahead and looking at this, it might not, you might not have realized what that meant was potentially a $100,000 consultant fee. And so maybe you would have asked different questions or thought about that, what seemed sort of casual conversation, because it wasn't a vote or anything like that here at the full board table. So, I'll take that feedback as chair of the Finance Committee for future projects. And also, I think like Ms. Asa said, we have that double-edged sword where this is definitely not about going to town bodies. But if we do want to have that conversation as a board, whether or not to take it to town bodies, we need to have actual numbers and information. And I, but I do also hear you that you didn't know that information would necessarily cost this. And if the board wants to have that conversation, I think, you know, this is obviously the right time to do it.
No, sure, I just, you know, we're, I guess my only point is we're jumping in a little bit here. We're not spending $100, we're spending $100,000. And so just, and again, to both of your points, I totally get, we have a complicated district with a large number of schools of varying vintages and ceiling, and, you know, and roof. So, of course, the more information that we have to go forward with this project, I just want to, I just want to pull out that that's kind of what we're doing with this line.
Totally fair.
Mr. Dyer?
I think Mr. Peterson raises a good point when he says bidding. All of us know that we're not bidding the job. We're securing consulting services. And yet, outside of this table, the word bid will seem like we're moving forward on this project. And so when we advance materials and whatnot to the next level of review in the town, we may want to refer to it as securing consulting services rather than using the term bid.
If I could just clarify that, because that's a good point. We normally don't have to bid professional services, but due to the amount this is going to cost, I've spoken with the purchasing director, and he said it would be best to bid those professional services.
Mr. Cullen, do you foresee, if we move forward with this, the information that we get from doing this, giving us more information for future building projects? Because we do have HVAC worked into the capital waterfall, I'm assuming as part of the estimates, for future renovations. Are we spending money now to get information that future building committees may not need to get later?
No, this is actually, we looked at all 18, all 17 school locations, and we're planning that seven of them won't need to be done or have a study done. There's about 10 schools right now that will need to be looked at in detail for total mechanical means of fresh air, air conditioning, and fire protection for the whole building. So, a professional team would need to go out, do drawings of the school system, maybe do some structural engineering, and then work with a controlled air edgerton company that's our PM guys, and assess what would it take to bring that school up to our standards of mechanical means of fresh air, air conditioning, and fire protection for the whole building. So they'll provide us all the documents we need at the same time, costs along the way, so we have an idea and have a relatively good package to share with this board and other boards of what that would entail. And then, would it be done? You know, we would also look at technically how many schools could get done in a summer. They probably couldn't do all 10 if it was bid that way, so it would be a long-term plan and how we would approach that.
May I ask, just because I'm on Sherman Building Committee now, and we're looking at bringing HVAC into that school, and some challenges, you know, whether or not duck work can be run in the ceiling, and looking at different units? And I'm wondering if we had this survey prior to the building committee, would that work? Would the challenges of that building been found by doing this sort of evaluation of the school prior to the building committee, you know, hiring?
I don't think the challenges you're mentioning are that difficult at Sherman. The HVAC, air conditioning, mechanical means of fresh air for Sherman will follow the model that Holland Hills following, that Riverfield followed, so they'll all be separate. There'll be a mechanical means of fresh air system, there'll be an air conditioning system, and there'll be a perimeter heating system that exists. So all three will work. There are some issues with some duck work in some of the classrooms, but nothing that was missed or a mistake or anything like that.
I wanted to follow up also.
Ms. Asa?
So, just to piggyback really quick on Ms. Vitale's question, I think what she's getting at is, if we do this exploration, this consulting, and get a report back, and let's say it doesn't get done, or, you know, or it doesn't move forward in a speed at which we are, would hope, is there information in this $100,000 report that we can use for future building committees on projects that are in the waterfall chart existing? Hence, when it comes to HVAC, will there be information that that building committee can use from this report that may offset some of the costs of that work and the seed money?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Asa. Was that your question, Ms., oh, Mrs. Gruber?
Well, I don't know if everyone's done with this page. I'm sorry, I do have one other question back in tuition that I've just been working at the math, and I have some questions. So I can either wait till everyone's done with this page, or we can go back. I just wanted to bring that up, so...
All right, let's finish Contracted Services first. Any more questions on that? Ms. Maxicanelli?
My only question is, because some of the answers I got to questions on this section and others involved my needing to find the answers on other pages, but they weren't referenced by question number, which I'm fine with that. But how would you like us to handle if we have follow-ups to the questions for tonight? Because I'm still finding where my answers were for previous questions. How would you like us to handle that?
If your questions came in towards the back end and we knew we had already answered it, but we didn't have the time to go through all six to find...
No, absolutely.
That's why it's good if you can repeat your question so that a board member could say, "It's in my section." That would be helpful, if there's one of those that...
Well, it's more that, it could be that the answer that you gave to the previous question is perfectly fine, and I don't want to use our time tonight. It's simply that I need the time to find all of them and match, and I didn't want to have everyone here do that work for me. So, it could be that I have no questions, but if I do, just submit them along with the questions for the next set of meetings, and then I just put to Ms. Vitale, "I may have those." So, I don't know if it has to be an agenda item, catch-up questions before we get to the future items, I guess is what I'm asking?
I would say probably go...
Do you understand what I'm asking?
Do it either way. We could go through the sections on the next agenda, and then after we go through the sections on the next agenda, just kind of wrap it up for anything from this meeting.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, so...
And I might just add that if you, if you have a question, let's say 130, that said, "Look somewhere else," if you would just send to me in your questions, "Can you give me the answer for 130?" That means we've already answered it somewhere. That would be easier for us, because we really, after tonight, we really want to be answering questions for the next section, because it takes literally from natal Tuesday just to get the next section back, especially if we have the same volume of questions.
Okay, so I'll try to do that part very quickly. And as I said, I just thought it should be on me to go find it. I didn't want to ask staff to help me find the answer to my own question that you already answered elsewhere. But if I can't find it quickly, I'll reach out for help then. Okay, thank you.
And this might be just for next year, in terms of formatting for questions, just to make it easier to kind of cross-reference, you know, come up with a system to make it a little bit easier. You know, you want the section, you want the page, you want, so we're all submitting our questions in some sort of similar format.
Well, you know, we tried last year actually doing it by topic, and then you didn't have your names next to your questions, and so the board didn't like that format. So that's why we went back this year, to keep your questions in a section. So we'll keep, we'll keep trying to refine the process.
Okay. Ms. Jacobson?
I just want to make sure that I know the exact amount from the loan and make room that's in these numbers. It's, we are putting aside $50,000 for that. Is that the total amount we're putting aside for that?
Any other questions on this section? Okay, we'll go back to tuition, Mrs. Gruber.
Thank you, and I apologize. So my question was on page 26, question number 105, and in the budget book, it's page 34 and 35. So my question is now going through this, and I apologize for not seeing, I always miss it every year, the numbers for the tuition, the breakout by school, for the magnet schools. So, these numbers here on page 26, in answer to my question 105, are these the correct numbers projected for 1920? Or are the numbers in the book on page 34? Because there's a big discrepancy here. It says total 183 on the answer to the question, but I just totaled up in the book, and it's 229. So I'm just trying to figure out which numbers are the right ones.
I'm sorry, can you give the page numbers again?
What page in the book are you looking at?
I'm looking at, the Q and A, it's page 26, question number 105. And there's that little chart that you did with the school broken down, AgriScience, Aquaculture, 6 to 6, Regional Center for the Arts, Discovery, and Fairchild Wheeler. There are numbers next to each one of those schools. On page 34, line item 329, tuition, tuition 6 to 6 magnet school, it says we are projecting 21 students. But here, it says 16 on the piece of paper that you answered, so I'm just trying to find out...
I can answer that, actually. The 183 was 1819, the 229 is 1920 projected. So I apologize if we didn't answer it in that way.
But I thought it said there was a decrease... But I thought it said there was a decrease in magnet enrollment.
There was this school year, but not our projected for next year. We actually have, our six to six is going up next year slightly, discovery magnets projected. Our aquaculture is projected to rise again, Fairchild Wheeler. So that's, the numbers, the 183 is our 1819.
Okay, so we are projected to have 229. But I guess my, my, the reason I asked the question is because it says right here in general, magnet school enrollment has declined.
It has for this current school year, yes.
Right, but this is the 1920 budget. So that's why it led me to believe that the decline in enrollment was for this book, this 1920. So actually, it's incre, it's increasing. It's projected to increase for 1920.
For the, for the Bridgeport, primarily magnet schools. And Ms. Muncell, you may be able to answer that. We have a big chart where we keep track of all of those. She's probably checking.
Has a decrease in the tuition?
But our magnet schools in our current school year decreased.
Right, but I guess the confusion came from in the 1920 budget book, it says it has decreased and, and that led me to think that you were projecting more of a decrease. Because I didn't have the 1718 budget handy to see that there was a decrease. So we're actually looking for, actually it's a fairly significant increase from 183 to 229.
Ms. Muncell, can you answer that? That's from that big chart.
In 1819?
Yes.
Current year, we budgeted 213 and there was a decline. The actual is 189. But next year, it's projected to go up to 230, 235.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. But I guess, so, but you projected, and then it came, in 1819, it was projected at a certain number and it ended up coming in lower. So is there any chance it could happen again this year? Or do you feel that, because it's a fairly significant increase, I guess is my question, from the actual 1819 to the projected 1920?
You know, we take, we take by grade and just progress everybody up and, and estimate the incoming class. And that's what we came up with for next year.
Okay.
Ms. Jacobson?
So following up on that, if we're projecting more than what we budgeted for in this year, why would we budget less?
Because it says a reduction of 43,000 in tuition?
Yes, I'm actually in the actual. I'm on page 85 of the budget book.
I think we are going to have to follow up on that one, Ms. Muncell, just to double check the large magnet chart.
Just because you said that you projected 213 for this year and we budgeted 517. Understood. We had lower enrollment and that's why this year the estimated is lower. However, next year you're anticipating 235, but yet we're budgeting less than we budgeted for the 213.
It sounds like that's the first question for next week's meeting.
Not a problem, not a problem. It's just, if it's more kids, why would it be less, right? I mean, that's all.
Well, unless it's, unless it's where they're going.
Yeah, so it could have to do with aquaculture, really throws that off.
Well, it also, but if you look at the numbers, we budgeted 517. So maybe it's the fact that that 235 is, excuse me, that 229 is more than the 183, but that 229 is less than what we anticipated this time last year. Thus, we budgeted 517,000.
It depends on what you're doing.
No, but we budgeted 517,000. So we are in fact looking to spend 473 versus the actual 376 of this year. So we are budgeting to spend more than we're spending this year, but it is less than what we thought we were going to need last year.
Got it. Good answer.
I might add that one of the places that we're seeing the increase in enrollment is aquaculture. And that is, there's, that's a block tuition rate up, you know, there is no maximum.
That's lower than the others, yep.
Any more questions on contracted services or tuition? Okay, moving on to capital, pages 42 to 43.
I'm, I'm ready to ask my questions about the, about the interior boom purchase, which Ms. Canelli is giving me grief about. I'm trying to find where you, so Dr. Jones or whoever answered the question, maybe it was you or Mr. Cohen who answered the question about this 45,000 dollar boom. You want me to say boom?
Page, page.
Oh, I'm sorry. My question, 66, page 16 of the, of our packet. It's object 501, capital outlay. An increase of 45,000 in maintenance slash custodial equipment is for the purchase of an interior boom lift, seal tape repairs and/or maintenance in areas that are otherwise inaccessible. And, and the answer that I got for this, I asked basically if there's a, if there's a lease versus buy answer. And the answer I got was about rentals.
Right.
Rental of about $950 for five or six times per year. So I guess I have several questions about how this would be used if we're buying one and we have multiple schools, how does it get transported? And are we, has anyone actually considered leasing one or buying a used one?
Well, we...
Why do we need a new one and only one?
Okay.
And a new boom.
It's in, in...
So look, Mr. Peterson, I asked a similar question in 131. So I share in the board's laughter about your question about the boom.
I can't believe you got two questions on that.
I know.
And if I can finish. The answer was, we spend right now six or $7,000 a year renting it.
Right.
And if we're going to spend 45,000, that tells me that we have about a six-year payback. And do these, does this equipment last longer than six years?
Yes.
Quite a bit longer.
Yes, and we have a PM program for some lifts that we have already in the district. We also think we can do more work with it if we had one. Right now, we're only renting it, trying to group together when we need it for certain schools or locations. If we owned one, we could get more use out of it.
So for me, it struck me as a capital investment with about a six-year payback, which is pretty good.
Yes, but I asked specifically about leasing.
Yeah, we did not look at leasing it. I think I answered it. I said, "No, we didn't consider leasing it." A lease with the option to buy or just lease?
I, I'm unfamiliar with these things, but in terms of rentals, I'm, I think about, you bring it out for a few days and then you return it as a lease where you would keep it for a year and do, use it as you will.
Yeah.
Is there, is there no option for something like that?
I don't know if there's an option to lease this small piece of equipment. I could look at that.
And is there, is there no used market for this? No iron planet or anything like that?
No.
A boom storm?
No.
Ironplanet.com is a place where you can...
Ms. Mancanelli?
So there is. I mean, we've been renting one for a long time. The prices are going up. We're paying to move it around. If we had our own, we'd be able to move it ourselves. We have a piece of equipment to do that with.
All joking aside, it's actually a really good question.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so, so looking at, looking at leasing, because if you're leasing and you're keeping it for, let's say, five years, and then we do a new lease and we get a new one, and, and let's say the life is 12 years, looking at the numbers, it's, it's actually, all joking aside, a very good question.
We can do that. We did not do that, but we can.
It's probably worth looking into. I'm sure it's probably a pretty quick, quick ask.
And, and you said prices are going up. Is it rental prices, purchase prices, leasing prices?
The rental prices are going up and it's getting more difficult to get it when we need it. So there's a big demand for them.
Any additional questions about the boom? Any other additional questions about capital? Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you for putting together the chart on the Chromebook warranty, non-warranty in-house repair. The losses so far, so I am on page 14 of our Q and A. It is only one question on that page. So so far in this year, 21 units so far have been non-warranty repairs are the losses. So are, in the new order that you're looking to purchase for next year, huh? Oh, sorry. I know you're looking to order extra units than the enrollment piece. Are you replacing those as well in that order? Or is that, are those just being taken as losses?
Like, are we replacing the...
Can you guys grab that other mic? Just, it works much better. Thanks.
We budget in the technology line enough fundings that we're able to cover the cost of replacement. Matter of fact, we've already replaced the, the 21 units that are represented there. We basically buy roughly around 30 at a time and keep an eye on where they're at and, and then, you know, keep the schools whole. So it's a constant recycle, which is why I also mentioned that even though those are not usable, we do use them for parts. So if we get a non-warranty repair, we're able to actually rebuild or as we like to call it cannibalize, to be able to use those parts and make a unit whole that might not have been able to be repaired otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
One follow-up. 140 units and we bought about 4,000?
That's correct. And only 21 of them are actually not usable. The rest of them were repaired and, and are back in use.
Okay, but in terms of issues with those Chromebooks, 140, whatever the issue was, which is about a 3% issue, when you were putting a whole program together, is that 3% better or worse than you were planning or thinking of?
Based on discussions with my peer group across the state, we expected between 10 and 12% by the end of the school year. So we're actually under what we expected.
Thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
Sorry, it's a Chromebook question. Dr. Jones, you answered a lot of my questions and I apologize, want to apologize publicly for my, my bad math. I had a, some kind of brain issue when I asked that question. I do want to ask though, one of the things you mentioned in your answer is that the new per-unit price for these is, is, I believe you said 2, 225?
What question number?
Oh, I'm sorry. I moved to somebody else's question.
Yeah, it's my question.
64.
It's the page right before, on page 13.
That's, the 225 is the budgeted number?
64. Question number 64, page 13.
I'm working on it.
13.
All right, my question.
Oh, yours?
Yeah, I'm asking my question.
I thought you said that it was somebody else's question.
I was looking at your question.
Oh, okay. Well, your question.
Um...
What's the page number? I'm sorry.
All right. So the, the question where I meant, where my math was bad is question 80 on page 18 of the packet. So I understood your, I understood the, I just messed that one up. But in your answer, you're talking about how the unit price is increased to 225 per unit. It's like an 11% increase.
It's the, that's the budget number we were used because the vendor informed us actually just before the holidays that because of the Chinese tariff threat, that they expected a 10% increase.
All right. So these are, these are the same model. We're not, we're not moving up to a different model. We're not, these are all the, all the...
Right now, our, we're still buying the same model that we bought last year, but I will tell you that normally we see a change in the model sometime in the late spring. For example, this time last year, we were buying what they called the generation five units. And by the time we bought the larger quantity, it was the generation six. So it's a similar model, but it's a different revision of that.
I guess, you know, procedural question going along with that. I, I understand how these different versions will come out on a frequent basis. At some point, we're going to be giving somebody a three or four-year-old version.
Possibly.
I guess the, my only concern is just making sure that everything is, we're not disadvantaging somebody by giving them an older...
No, we'll be very careful to make sure that the, the bundle is correct, that the machine can still handle the operating system and therefore the apps that that operating system will actually use, and that the features and functions are as similar as we can make them.
Okay.
Any more questions on capital? Mr. Asa?
Just one quick question on the note here in the budget book on 43 under 503. Increase in technology capitals for the completion of the elementary school wireless project that was not completed due to lack of funding. I apologize if that's answered in here if it was asked, but can someone just mention that?
Yeah, it was, it was answered. That's an incorrect statement. It's actually backwards. We, we actually considered postponing it and we made a decision not to. So I think somebody misinterpreted that and that's how that got into the budget book. But it's on target if we do it in 1920 as expected.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? No?
I only had one question from a previous item, which I had just missed. There was a reference to on, and it's not about the Chromebooks, but the on, or I don't know if it is, through technology, but the online book for the FCS curriculum. Is that something, even though it's online, is that something which will be coming up for a spring vote?
Right, so it's, it was on supplies and materials?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
As a textbook, yes, it would be coming up for a vote.
Okay. Any final questions before we go to the public?
I have two, or do you want to wait until after the public? I have just two. Of the 164 questions, I only found three that the response was, "We'll get back to you on that." Are those three to be responded to tonight verbally? Or are you going to put those on the next week's? I think one was, "Where are we with the ad on the high school program?" And then, "Can we put a page on the web?" And the freshman orientation question that Jennifer asked.
This thick version that you had tonight was all updated? Those were, those are included in this one?
Okay.
So if you tell me the page number, I'm happy to answer.
No, no.
Okay.
The page, the question number is in here, just in the revised document.
Yes.
Okay, I, thank you. And then the second is normally on the Tuesday before the Thursday vote, we've included an, we've included an agenda item asking the board to at least alert us if they are going to propose any changes so that the staff would have time to investigate the pluses and minuses of that change. In looking at the January 22nd agenda, I don't see that as a line item. Are we still intending on asking the board to say, "Are we okay with this budget?" Or are we going to be suggesting changes, plus or minus?
We will, I will be asking the board to vocalize any changes they would like to make.
For next Tuesday.
For next Tuesday.
Thank you.
And if you know something, you know, now, or if you need clarification, if you want to give Dr. Jones and staff the heads up prior to our meeting, please do so. Any additional comments or questions before we go to the public? Mr. Peterson?
I have just kind of a general question about the presentation of the budget. I asked it in, in number 76. It relates actually to the theft loss account, which I totally get that we're adding $25,000 or budgeting $25,000 for that. But the line item in the, in the budget actually shows a 0% increase, even though it's, it's going from 0 to 25,000, which is obviously a math problem when you're talking about a percentage increase. But it's listed in the, in the rightmost column in number, I believe, 58599 as a 0% increase. And there's, there's several places where that's the case. And I don't know what the accounting standard is in those cases, but I, I find that a little difficult to follow. If someone's looking and says, "Oh, this line, there's no, there's no increase that year," when in fact we're initiating spending in an area.
Okay. Ms. Muncell said she'll try to change that.
That's great. I, again, I, I understand, I understand the math, but...
Ms. Jacobson?
All right, one last question. And I'm jumping back to the new packet. The new packet, it's, thank you so much for whoever actually did update the school allocation chart, because I know that was going to be a tough sell to get ready for tonight. I appreciate the work that goes into that. So you guys all with me? Do you need a page?
Page.
Okay.
Page 15.
Thank you. And I had asked this question just for the board to know that, what I wanted to know was the difference between what we've been allocating and what the schools have actually been receiving in terms of actuals. And I'll look at this more, because we just got this at the seat and I might have follow-up questions on it. But just out of the gate, so for this year's 10% give back that our schools were added, asked to give back, can you just share with us what that's going to be going towards in other areas of the budget?
Right now, when we talk about the give back, we're really trying to close that gap that we talked about during our first quarter report. And so... And so most of that, as you know, is the, the retirements, right, the staffing. So we go into the budget and try to have the least pain as possible. As we get to the end of the year, and this chart, Ms. Muncell spent a lot of time on this, trying to help kind of show the picture of what happens. You know, last year, we had a lot that was frozen throughout the year. Our goal is always to get the money back to our schools. And when you look on that very bottom is where you can really see that, you can see the 1718 per pupil. And if you even look at the high school line where it has the 475, 420 per pupil. So when we started out at the beginning for 1718, we had budgeted 475, but we had more high school students show up. So the reality is, without doing anything, their per pupil went down.
Right.
Simply because they had, and that's one reason we've made adjustment this year. Instead of going by projection for 1920, we're going with their actual to try to stop that. Then what you see in the orange, which is the next line over, is the actual per pupil, the actual enrollment and what that, what that percentage was. Because over on the right-hand side, where you see the peach color, that's what they got back at the end of the year. And instead of putting that back into a school and you have three weeks just for everybody to go and buy kind of frivolous stuff, we make sure we give that to the principals to say, target this on something that can really make a difference in your building, that enhances everybody. So that was steam equipment that you see there. The other thing you'll see is when you look at their allocations on the top, it looks like they went down. But then if you go over to the far right, you'll see the capitals went up. And that's where it went.
No, no, I know, at the end, they made up. They know for this, last year, they made up, you made up for some of the funding to go back and they had spent it on capital things. For this year, knowing that our elementaries were a little under-enrolled in our, I had asked you in the beginning of the school year, do we adjust a little bit after that actual count comes in on October 1 to make sure everyone's getting their fair shake of this pie? And we don't adjust, because you.
We do not.
Right, we don't. We don't adjust. Were the two high schools, they were higher enrolled than we had projected, so they got less pretty much than what they were supposed to get. Were they, did they both have to give back the same 10%, knowing that they were already in a 10%, in a, in a decline? They did. Okay.
But I don't believe we, it's like we did last year, we also don't touch athletics, some of those other areas that are part of their whole high school.
I just wanted to see if they were slightly adjusted, because they already started, okay, thank you.
There's so much higher to begin with that, to run the elementaries on what you really look at your allocation, even though they're smaller schools, there's such a disparity in the amount per student. So the relative impact to a high school versus an elementary is different, even when you're talking about the 10%.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Okay, we'll go to the public. Any public, public comment on the superintendent's recommended 2019, 2020 budget? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm just going to comment on the section that you've discussed this evening. My concern is the $100,000 to bid for air conditioning. My concern is this, I appreciate the thought process of trying to come up with a number in order to present to the other town bodies and get a handle on what this could cost. My concern is in doing that, you're asking for money that technically isn't educationally driven in the education budget. To me, it's no different than if you were in front of asking for money for a building committee and asking for that consulting startup fund in the beginning. So my concern is, I think that this board, if it is going to be allocating to town bodies that they want HVAC in all of our buildings, that using the estimates of building committees that you are already working on, if it's elementary that you're focusing on, then I think you need to come up with what a ballpark number is without paying the $100,000 in consulting fees. And then make the decision where in your waterfall you are all going to be asking for this to fall. I mean, I tend to doubt that this is going to be a million-dollar project if you've got so many schools to do, and the level of detail that they will have to be done. So to me, this board is kind of putting the cart before the horse. If you haven't made that decision, that this is going to be a waterfall item that you're going to be pitching to the town, and at least proceed in that manner as to where that's going to be. I'd like to see the $100,000, if you're going to leave it in your budget, go towards more educationally-driven information for our students or our teachers than to see a bid project for consulting for something that this board hasn't even made a commitment to including in its waterfall project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Bob Smoller, I'm president of the Fairfield Education Association. First, I'd just like to say I'm very supportive of this budget and I appreciate the hard work that went into it. One point I did just want to bring up, though, the special ed staff continues to be extremely stressed in trying to fulfill their responsibilities. We've been talking for some time now about caseload and workload caps to provide more reasonable expectations of what an individual special ed person, whether it be a sped staff person, an SLP, a cycle social worker should reasonably be expected to do. There have been some incremental additions to the special ed staff, but nothing significant in this budget from a standpoint of relieving the stress that the staff is feeling right now. And I would hope that as you explore the approval of this budget, you might take into consideration what is supposed to be coming, workload and caseload guidelines from the staff and how, how that was developed and how that will potentially impact this budget. I'm not aware of any staff involvement in the, in the development of these caseload and workload caps that we're going to see shortly. Perhaps there was some that I'm just not aware of. But I was hoping, and we continue to hope as a staff, that these caps will be reflected in this year's budget in an appropriate manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, saying none. Any last comments before we adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Ms. Max Cannelli, second line, Ms. Jacobson, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you. [end of transcript]